Work session from Monday, August the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two will be in the program. Mr. Enders, roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Governor.
Here.
Mr. Silver.
Here.
Mr. Siders.
Here.
Mr. Grant.
Mr. James.
Here.
Mr. Ossie.
Here.
Mrs. Stamm.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Each member is present, relax.
Will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. My main goal of this school board is to provide to the children of this district the best education possible for them to be successful in their future endeavors. We are very aware of the need to look at the community as a whole and what taxpayers can reasonably afford. This is a work session to discuss potential changes to configuration of our school districts. At this point, it is a fact-finding mission and not whether everyone agrees. We are looking at possible closing none, one, or more buildings and/or reconfiguration. We will put out what facts we have at our disposal and see if there are gaps in the information. There will be the normal two courtesies of the floor. The first one should be used to identify something you would like us to consider, and the second one, you may go into more detail. We will limit the first courtesy of floor to thirty minutes. The discussion part of the work session will be no longer than ninety minutes, and the reality is that after tonight, we may sound more confused and need several questions answered. That is all part of the research that needs to happen for the board to do its due diligence to what is best for this district. So with that, we will do, go to the first courtesy of the floor. There was not a sign-in out there, so if you want to say something at this courtesy floor, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, at this point, I'm fine with that. Say your name, address, and agenda you would like to address, and you will have three minutes. So if there's anyone that would like to comment.
Good evening, Board. Bob Pryor, Mifflin Township. I'd just like to add a comment. When you're in your, getting in your information, everything, I know that we probably have the need for more classrooms than we may have in certain buildings, but I think one solution to that would be to keep the class sizes on the higher side rather than the lower side. That would open up more room in those schools, whichever you decide to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pursuant to fourteen twenty-five, Locust Street, if you're a P.A., I've been around this school district long enough, and I've seen every building we have built, I've seen every building we've torn down, I've seen them torn down. I've had family teach in one-room schools, I have had family teach in our school system. I'm, you know me, I love our school district, and I don't see what is on the papers tonight in our agenda. And now, I think before the evening's over, that a lot of what you do or what you decide on will be based on the enrollment in our schools. The only one true form of accurate enrollment figures is done by our superintendent. He does a monthly report spelling out our enrollments, and that's who we abide by. Anything in the past is past, from now on to the future, so we abide with what the superintendent provides for us as accurate information to be used, considering what should be able come to. Certainly, I don't agree with moving, tearing down any more buildings, spending any more money, so I'll probably have more to say later on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Connie Packer, and I live in Mifflin Township. I know there was such a fuss when the Nippeno School was closed by parents, but now, if we look back, we see that that school now is making money for the district, and the students adjust. People think they don't, but it's the parents that have a hard time adjusting. When the Sallesburg School was built, and I think it was nineteen sixty-three, there was four hundred and fifty students at that time. There are now is a hundred and eighty, so you can see we have a big decline. And I understand the Sallesburg School needs a new roof. I don't know about insulation in the Sallesburg and Avis School, but if they were never reintalated, I'm sure with the cost of fuel now, that'd be another expense to insulate those buildings, so, because, as we know, inflation is out of control. And I understand that we are the highest, pay the highest taxes in the county. People that are on fixed income, it's a struggle. We've had our home for fifty-three years, and I hope not to have to lose it. You know, if we don't pay our taxes, it's not our home anymore. So I'm hoping you consider on closing both schools. I know that it'd take time to adjust, to, you know, get the students moved around, but I understand that with some work, that those schools could be closed, and, you know, it would work out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Humler, Porter Township. I just want you all to consider it, you know, the closing of the school, nothing's easy. I don't want to see a school close, but yet, we have to. I was at Wisest today, eggs were three forty-five a dozen. I thought, well, really wanted to buy two dozen. That's seven dollars. Gosh, do I want to do that? In turn, no, I bought one dozen. I wanted two, but just like you all, you know, you want to keep them schools open. You don't want to cut programs. Sometimes you have to make hard choices. It's just, sometimes you're down to common sense. You don't want to dump more money into these buildings only to next year, the year after that. Have to close them down because enrollment is down, or for whatever reason. It's just like opening up the window and throwing money away that we really don't have. You don't have it, I don't have it. I'm lucky, I can pay my taxes. I'll tell you, a friend of ours had to sell a gun this week, his hunting gun. He wanted to go hunting, but he had to sell it. My husband asked him, how come he had to sell his guns? He says, well, I either have to pay a bill, or I got to buy my medicine. Okay? This is a homeowner in Jersey Shore. You know, the people can't withstand this. It's, it's great to have these little schools. It's grand, when you can afford it. Thank you.
Thank you. The first thing, the floor will be closed, and move on to the discussion items. The first discussion item is school closures. Doesn't have to be in the order that is listed here, but those were the four suggestions that have been made to this point, is either close both, close Avis, close Sallesburg, or no closures at all. So the floor is open to any board member that wants to start.
So I'm going to start this off, and I just want the public to understand again why we are here during, for this work session. It is my understanding, as a board member, that the Capital Projects Committee cannot come to a conclusion on what to do, what projects to do, where to go from there. And my understanding, if we don't have money to spend, or we don't want to spend money, then it should have stopped there. I have constituents that are very upset that we are again revisiting these options. I am very disappointed in the Capital Projects Committee that this is where it had to come. And it's very heart-wrenching to think that the only thing that we hear is negative at these meetings. Nobody is ever bringing to light the amazing scores that we have at Sallesburg and Avis Elementarys. Nobody is, you know, bragging on anything in these, in these schools, and it is very disheartening. There is a lot of great things happening in this district, in our schools, in our community. We are having growth beyond, you know, recognition. West Company is growing, there, Patrice just said that the Water Authority is getting monies because they see that there is expansion in this area. I just, again, my constituents have voiced that, you know, they are very disheartened that we are at this point again, and they don't understand it, and quite frankly, neither do I. So, I look forward to hearing everybody's side, and I do have an open mind, but, like I said, it's just...
Well, I'll start off. How we got to this point, prior to this board, the board recognized that a lot of our schools needed major upgrades, plus the administration building. And to provide funding for such upgrades, it was also understood that additional debt would need to be incurred, since the Capital Projects Fund currently has about a million dollars. This was all discussed by the previous board and approved to go forward with the Hunt feasibility study. And to borrow, to borrow money requires a current feasibility study. So that was the, the plan of attack, and we hired Hunt, and they completed their report. During their review, they also reviewed our, of the buildings, they also reviewed our athletic facilities, and they, they come up with recommendations and related costs for improvements in, in that area as well. Hunt was also requested to provide the feasibility to close either Avis or Sallesburg or both. And they concluded that all three options were doable, and provided cost estimates for each. Hunt's original cost estimates, they broke them down into two priorities, priority one and priority two. Those two priority totals was thirty million dollars, and an additional twelve point five million for the athletic field upgrades, and most of that would be a new, a new football These, these numbers exclude any costs associated with closing schools. These are just looking at what are current facilities, the condition of them, and the upgrades that they suggested need done over a period of time, of course. Now, of the, of the forty-two million, which would include the athletic field, administration submitted to the Capital Projects Committee upgrades of ten point nine million for the buildings and the twelve million dollars for the athletic field, or a total of twenty-three million. So out of, out of Hunt's forty-two million, administration is recommending and has recommended to the Capital Projects Committee that we strongly consider spending twenty-three million for upgrades to all the buildings, ten million to the buildings and twelve million for the athletic fields. Hunt also proposed an additional twenty-four million educational space additions and renovations, which are not included in administration's recommendations. Now, the list, and they're in your binder, the detailed list that administration has recommended, out of the ten million dollars for the buildings, six point four million is identified to Sallesburg and Avis, or roughly sixty percent of that total, sixty million, or ten, of the ten million, six point five million is identified by administration for Avis and Sallesburg alone, obviously indicating that they're older schools, they need most work as far as HVAC and roofs and air conditioning at Sallesburg, some of the, some of the big, but the list is in your binder, so you have, you have exactly what recommend, has been recommended by administration. As far as enrollment history, since the closure of Nippeno's, our enrollment has decreased by four hundred and thirty-five students, almost...
Where are you going, where are you taking them from? I know your, I know your, your enrollment history, you're going from here to, where to where, so that we're aware.
But you don't have enrollment history on here, so when am I, when am I going to talk about that? That's, that's all part of the issue.
Right, what years are you talking about? From two thousand and ten to, or two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and...
I'm ready to...
That's what I'm asking.
I'm ready to tell you.
Oh, okay.
Can I pause for a second?
You sure can.
Where does Capital Projects have anything to do with enrollment?
Well, here's, here's the problem. How is Capital Projects going to make recommendations to the board without, when, when we're considering six point five million for Avis and Sallesburg alone, is, is that the way we want to, to invest in the future with declining enrollments?
Again, I ask, where does Capital Projects have anything to do with enrollment? I, and this is why I'm asking, is because Capital Projects, to me, is, is the building, is the ground.
Yeah.
Is the encompass of a school. It does not have to do with class sizes as far as what teachers, you know what I mean? Like, is...
You're exactly right, but to move forward, it, it's, it's related in the sense of, do we want to put money into both of those buildings? And that's what Capital Projects' job is, that's, you're exactly correct.
Capital Projects is putting, is asking the question whether or not we should be putting money into these buildings, but, again, that should not be an enrollment, like, I guess my question is, if enrollment was not declining, I could make the, put out there, well, you still have to spend six point four million dollars on these schools. Well, I don't want to spend six point four million dollars on a school just because I don't, we don't have the money. Are you, do you understand what I'm saying? Like, you have a house that has four people living in it, and you need a roof, but you have the same house that has eight people living in it. Well, I don't want to put a roof on the house that only has four people living in it. I'd rather put a roof on the house that has eight. Like, I, I just don't feel like the number of people that... Like, I, I just don't feel like the number of people that are in that building reflects directly on the amount that it costs to put a roof on a building.
But put yourself in a position of somebody in the Capital Projects Committee.
And that's what I'm trying to do.
In the blind. And we would say, yeah, we, we think it's a good idea to spend six point four million on those two schools. We could come to the conclusion that in good conscience, we could recommend that. You, we can't operate in a vacuum and ignore all the facts that surround making that decision. And, and the facts are that those schools have major declines in enrollment over the last eight years. And I was ready to, to talk about that. And we can, we can keep the issues separate. I, I have no, I, problem. But you're still gonna, we're still gonna have a problem with the Capital Projects Committee recommending to the board what administration has suggested that we, that we do.
Go ahead and continue.
Okay.
Thank you for answering
Yep.
that question.
Okay, the enrollment history, as far as the last eight years, uh, starting, I think in thirteen fourteen, the year after Nipponos closed, uh, we lost four hundred and thirty-five students district wide, roughly seventeen percent. And that is double the increase of the, of anybody else in like Coming County. Montersville was eight point nine percent and Williamsport was eight point six percent.
Is that all elementary students?
No, this is overall.
Overall.
Overall. The major factor contributing to this decline is a twenty percent decrease in elementary enrollment. Uh, the decrease at Saudisburg over those eight years has been thirty-five percent. Roughly a hundred students. And sixty-eight students at Avis are twenty-seven percent. Pennsylvania Department of Education's projections for the next nine years shows a district-wide decrease of approximately fifteen percent. Just, uh, just to show you what might be going on or what's happening in like Coming County. Population like Coming County from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty rank from, by two point six percent as opposed to the whole country having an increase of six point five percent. And Pennsylvania growing a little over a half percent. Now, we might say, who cares? But the point is, is something unique happening in like Coming County versus the rest of the state and the country, and especially very short school district? And do we have a reasonable expectation that that downward trend will be reversed? You know, is there anything out there that would suggest that?
I think there is. So you, you asked, your question was, what do we think is happening in like Coming County?
Well, that.
That, that would cause that decrease in the population?
Yeah.
Quite frankly, it's age.
Are you sure?
I.
Do you have, do you have something back that up?
I do not, because I did not know that that would be a question.
Well, I'm not.
But I mean, I, I can.
I'm not asking any way to answer.
See that we do have an, an, a population of elderly folks in this area, a great population of them.
But.
So if, if they are passing away, like how many people did we lose during COVID?
Yeah. But what explains the decrease, the heavy decrease in our district's elementary enrollment?
People are not having as many children as one of them. Because the last time, last time I looked as far as family numbers, it's pretty static.
That very well could be, yeah.
When I was in school, there were families of twelve, fourteen. Most of the time now, they're probably of three to four.
In our binder, Dr. Omer provided the, uh, the most recent kindergarten enrollment, and I don't know if that's updated or not at this point.
I think the last I gave you was four since I gave you the binder, and I think there's been a couple since saying of.
Yeah, yeah.
So what would that current number be for kindergarten enrollment?
As of last week, it was one thirty-five. I think we've added four since then for one thirty-nine. But we've got another week and a half to go, so.
Your biggest addition is usually the last two weeks.
What is the number?
After the initial.
It, it should be right now about one thirty-nine. There's been, I emailed that to Mr. Kenley last week, and we've had a couple since then. Last year at this point, we were at one fifty-one, so we're pretty close and we'll probably be pretty close to the same on day one, I would guess.
So the projected numbers that we received is close, is, is one sixty-eight?
Mm-hmm. That's because.
Cause that's, yeah, cause that's.
At the end of last, we started last year on day one at one fifty-one.
Right.
We ended the year last year at one sixty-eight. We added a significant number of kindergarteners during the year last year. If you'll recall, we had multiple conversations about the fact that our kindergarten, that's why we added a kindergarten teacher, because from day one to the end of the year, even before the end of the year, we had added twenty kindergarten kids across the district.
Now.
We, we believe we'll be close, back close to that number again, once we get into the school year.
Now the, your five sixteen twenty-two report shows one sixty-one with twenty-one twenty-two. But yours is in one sixty-eight. All right. All right, uh, I mean, I'll, I'll stop and you can redirect whatever you want, but I'm going through, I'm going to build up to what, what I think supports the need to consolidate. So if you want me to stop and discuss each piece as we go, or however you want to do it.
And Dr. Almer, can you emphasize how fluid numbers are in enrollment?
So one of the things I was asked is, um, enrollment over time last year. So on the first, so to answer that question simply, we started, last year, August third, we were at twenty-one seventy. By the time we did our October one child count, we were at twenty-one seventy-five. We were as low as twenty-one forty-seven in January, and we were back up to twenty-one ninety-seven by April. So I believe that has largely to do with COVID and masks last year, that we fluctuated anywhere, we fluctuated as many as fifty kids from one part of the year to another.
And I don't think we have received all the kids back from the cyber school charter school, wherever they went when there was COVID. It was starting to build back up, and then we had the masking again that upset everybody and kids were pulled out of school and so. I don't think we've given enough time to build it back up again, the kids to come back. My opinion.
Anyone else want to interject at this point?
I have a question. So when we do the, back to the numbers, so I understand it right, this comes from the PDE, which is the birth rate, correct, correct, from? So if we do two thousand and twenty-two, that's from the birth from two thousand and nineteen. The children that were born in two thousand and nineteen in this area, that's where they get those numbers? Is that correct?
What are you looking, are you looking at my report?
Yes, I'm looking at your report.
So, not exactly, because what I have, what I did, what we talked about when we get, when I give you that enrollment number in order to build your budget, we assumed, and if you look, second grade and first grade, which was last year's kindergarten and first grade, they were almost within a couple numbers of each other most of the year. So we went into knowing where our enrollment was when we started kindergarten orientation, and it was pretty close to the previous year. We assumed we were going to be right about one sixty-eight on day one, because that's where we were. We're, we're hitting metrics about the same, like number of kids enrolled by orientation, number of kids enrolled by the first of July. Like, we're monitoring kindergarten registrations, and they're pretty close to where we were last year at all those points. So we, my one sixty-eight on that report that you have was an assumption based on the numbers that I had leading up to kindergarten first day.
So then.
It's an estimate of where it will be when school starts.
I could go back and look at PDE's estimate based on births, but that assumes that.
No, yeah, no deaths.
Where, where, but where, which hospital should I pull them from?
Right, right. No, I understand, and we have a, we have the, the area school district, so we also have Clinton County, which also makes, I understand that too. So, um, but it's still basically a good guess on it. It's not a actual exact number.
It is every year.
And then after school starts, then the enrollment continues to change versus problems in the household, versus people moving in the area and people moving out of the area. Okay.
Remember when we presented the data from the transportation conversation, we averaged two changes a day, either in or out.
Right.
So that could, that's three hundred and sixty kids moving in or out in a school year.
Or within.
Right, so.
Or within, from one building to another.
Right, so with the dynamics, then it's just a later problem we'll have to deal with, like what we found in transportation. You know, now we have another problem that we're dealing with that, you know, got overlooked. So I think we should throw all the eggs in the basket, look at them all, discuss it, and try to, you know, be simple, listen to what everybody has to say. I want to hear what Kayla has to say. I also want to hear what Wayne has to say. So can we look at all the eggs in the basket instead of being surprised? Cause this year is already done, so whatever we decide to do isn't going to affect this year. It's going to be the following year. So I don't understand why we should feel like there is animosity or some kind of like harsh whatever, because I, I, I don't know if it's a political pull or, and I hope it's not. But I think Wayne is right by covering everything that he's putting in, like all the, all the factors, cause you know, I don't, you're not going to build the roof before you build the foundation. Am I wrong to think that?
I mean, I think it's wrong that, um, you know, how long has it been on Capital Projects to do the roof at Saudisburg that it just keeps getting kicked down the road and never gets done?
Hasn't it been kicked down the road, like beautification, like the aesthetics of the school was done before the roof was fixed? I wasn't in the area, but I wasn't like, like things, like when they redid the high school, I wasn't here when they redid the high school. I wasn't living here. But they added on to it, they added stuff, they added the things in front of the junior high to make it aesthetically pleasing, so people would like it. Well, you know what? It's nice, but could other things have been done?
Probably, and probably should have been.
Okay, so, so instead of saying.
To answer that a little bit, it kind of happened, what's happening in education, not just here, but nationwide, statewide, because for example, personally, I hate those things in front of the building, but that's me. And they say it's supposed to protect you from the elements and the rain, while the, when the thing's this wide and you have kids standing on there, it doesn't protect them from anything. But they're very, they're very costly to take down, very, very costly to, to, to get rid of. But, um, when you looked at the high school, I was saying to somebody today, when we built that high, when that high school was built, it was built as a ten to twelve building. Why was it built as a ten to twelve building? In the history of Jersey Shore, high school's always been nine through twelve, but at, at that time, when that was built, that was where, the way things were going. High school became a ten through twelve, twelve. And we found out a few years later, it didn't work for us, and they added on the ninth, they added on the ninth grade wing. That's what they used, that's what they used to call that. I, I look at where my daughter is going to school. They have a, a, they have a high school that's nine through twelve, but the ninth grade is in this totally separate building, which was as a fat and education at one point in time, and is connected by a walkway, so it's all connected. So that's kind of where some of those things come from, Jesse. It's not that they're just arbitrary. It's what's happening, tends to be happening in education at the time, and your architects and stuff pick up on that. They're the ones that feed, feed you that information. I'm not saying the wrong writer indifferent, it's just that that's kind of how some of those things happen.
And with Saudisburg, I mean, it's not the whole roof, is it? Isn't it just over the multipurpose room or something?
It is the gym, uh, that, the roof that needs replaced is on the backside of the building, I think, believe gym, uh, multipurpose room, stage area, but also the, there is a section on the front as well. It's not the whole roof. It's pieces of the.
Is it leaking at the moment?
No.
When does the warranty run out? Like?
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of what's been happening.
The end of this year.
The end of, the, the people that gave us the insurance on it kept allowing us to extend the insurance, because the room, they, the roof they felt was good enough to do that, so. You remember, we probably extended that at least.
I think till next September.
Yeah, but we probably extended over the last.
Couple past. But, but this is the last, this is the last year that they're going to extend it.
Right.
Because it is getting to the point of.
But at this point, no, there's no leaks in the building.
You have to build on to JSE. Anyways, when people don't realize, they say about closing schools to save money. If you close schools, you're going to have to put money into millions of dollars into building down at JSE. There's not room for those kids. There is not room for those children. So why in the world would we close schools? And, and then have to borrow millions of dollars to build on to Jersey Shore Elementary? It doesn't make sense to me. Why would we do that? Why aren't we just building, putting, doing what we have to do for maintenance, which would be the roof at Saudisburg? Let alone see where we're at. Maybe the cost of construction will be less. Maybe the enrollment will come up. We need to sit back. I know that's not popular with certain ones, but I just don't think that they realize that you have to build on to JSE if you close the schools. There's not room.
Does the Saudisburg School District need installation? The, um, her name was Connie Packard brought it up during, the floor for public comment. Does it need installation? Is it cold?
Not that I'm aware of. Seen that in the report, the HVAC one that I have seen.
There wasn't certain classrooms last year that were cold. Thanks.
Also, indoor list of priority items at South, they have like the architect identified boiler replacement, hot water heater replacement, unit ventilators in classrooms. We talked about, if you were air conditioning, the ins, there's insulation listed, but it's piping through the building, insulated, you do piping through the building. Upgrades to the kitchen, um, relief, uh, air circulation plumbing, there are, there's updated plumbing, um, some storm drainage. Some storm drainage and some network IT infrastructure, overbuilding envelope. Then they talk, they do, they do list the roof, they list, uh, brick restoration around the outside of the building, which is pretty common for buildings. And they have multiple lines, brick restoration, some brick that needs cleaning, some brick that needs repointed. There's, uh, they wanna look at the chimney on top of the boiler. There's some more brick noted, site drainage. I wouldn't say call this insulation, but some of the windows need to be repainted and re, and or redone, uh, exterior light. And so, there, there's no mention in your feasibility study of needed insulation, other than insulating the pipes when you replace the HVAC system.
There's a detailed list at the end of, uh, the facility section. And that list, I believe, is only the ones that administration has recommended that we do.
But those are the ones that we pulled into the categories of HVAC and building envelope. There was something that was identified in terms of not being sealed well, like you heard me say, the windows um, or something in the exterior of the building. All those things were pulled as priority items.
That's the ten million dollars that I, uh, talked about before.
Right. Thank you.
So, in that breakdown for Saudisburg, there, initially, they were saying about the boiler being replaced and so on. Obviously, the boiler would be up to date and new, but was there just one boiler figured for that? Or were there two to have a backup system in case something happens to the first one?
I believe it was redundant.
I couldn't find it right off the get-go here. But that's an extra expense too that would be put into that.
They actually listed in the, in the line item, that's why I wouldn't go read it. Current boilers inefficient beyond its useful life and there's no system redundancy. So, they listed, well, a replacement, but redundancy.
I have a question on, on, as I get into elementary class sizes. We, we had budgeted for, uh, a new position, new teacher at JSE fifth grade. Is that open right now or because the twenty-one, twenty-two shows three teachers for fifth grade? And also twenty, two twenty-three so, shows, uh, three teachers as well.
Oh, are you looking at the six twenty-eight report?
Yes.
So, that, once we do the August report reflecting the new school year, you'll see a fourth one there.
Okay.
It is not open. We did fill that, but you'll see when you get an August report, I think.
There was a teacher out in kindergarten too at JSE, right? So, there's four, five.
Yeah, you, that's not on that till June twenty eighth or forty.
Okay. So, that'll be coming out for the next board meeting?
I, I have a, a question, Dr. Olmer. In order to even class sizes back in the day, historically, they would send out letters to the parents asking if they saw that one school was overloaded with, say, first graders. They would send letters out to parents asking if their child would be interested in going to another elementary school. You know, my youngest ended up going to Jersey Shore Elementary, although he could have gone to Avis. And, uh, I, I don't know what. Try to even those classes so there isn't a whole lot and, you know, in one class and maybe in another class there isn't.
We tried that last year.
Not work.
To avoid hiring a teacher, if you'll recall, at second grade at Sal. And that was when you had a, the board had a number of angry parents, cause they did not want their kids to move. No one volunteered and all it did was make people angry.
Well, I know that that was a procedure that was done because we volunteered my youngest.
And we did, I mean, I did ask. That was one of the solutions last year, if you remember.
I was just trying to think of some way to even the class sizes up and that was one way that I thought that maybe we could.
When was the last time that?
You mean the borders of the, where they.
I believe it was when Nipponos was closed was the last time that was looked at. And that has come up and I, I, I won't say no, but I just want the board to remember that's a temporary solution. Because when those kids move on to the next grade level or move on to the next building, you may then be faced with a situation where your numbers aren't where you need them to be again because you don't, the same kids at the same age levels aren't living in the same place. It can be done, but, but know that it's a temporary solution. And one of the things I heard, one, one of the things I keep hearing about Nipponos was the line kept moving. Like, so it was a criticism of a previous board and administration that the line kept moving because as enrollment in one area or another lost K to five kids, then the board kept moving the line with more kids.
I mean, basically, the people on Main Street went to Nipponos. At one time, it was one side of me, you know, and then the other end, and it, it did keep moving.
So, that is something the board can look at, but know that you're gonna have to look at that over time because it's gonna change.
If I asked what the goal was of Capital Project, like, were you trying to come up with a ten-year plan for this list? A five-year plan, three-year plan? Like, what were you trying to, was there a certain amount of money that you were thinking of spending every?
No, we didn't, we, we couldn't get that far.
You couldn't get that.
Right, because, because we still had the issue of, are we gonna prioritize ten million dollars that administration, uh, recommended without which direction we're going with, with schools?
And to be fair, closing a school or schools would not be a recommendation that comes out of Capital Projects.
Correct. Okay, I, I did look at class sizes and I'll give you some numbers. In twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three, last, current year and the previous year, we've added five elementary teachers. While elementary enrollment has declined by forty-six from the last two years actual, twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty, I'm sorry, forty-six, declined forty-six from the year twenty nineteen, twenty. So, the next two years, twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two, which we have final numbers now, our enrollment, elementary enrollment has declined by forty-six. But we've hired five new elementary teachers. Using, uh, Dr. Olmer's, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three projections, the average class size for, uh, JSE will range, based on current numbers, a low of sixteen, roughly sixteen or seventeen at for kindergarten, up to a high of, um, doing this in my head now, twenty-five for fifth grade. Uh, or an overall average of JSE for, is, based on those numbers is twenty-two for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. Class sizes for Avis, on the other hand, range from fifteen to nineteen or an average of eighteen. And for Saudisburg, the, the range is thirteen point five to eighteen or an average is sixteen point one. And I will tell you that I've heard, uh, from a good source that elementary teachers at JSE, um, they look, they look at the other schools as far as enrollment and there's, there's definitely a morale problem. When their, when their averages is twenty-two and the other schools are like sixteen to eighteen.
But that doesn't, that doesn't stay there, Wayne. You really, that's. You're not.
But it's been there. You can, these last two years.
When you look at a situation where in the last two years and, and Avis and, um, we had to add a kindergarten teacher because we got over thirty. That makes a big difference in the average over that small, small building. But it's okay if, at Saudisburg or Avis where we get that they have twenty-nine and that's okay to them. They don't, they don't complain about that. You have to look at the, the whole picture. It's not that, you just can't take an average of the whole school, of the whole school. Yeah, and, and kindergarten this year might have been small, but kindergarten year before, before it got up to the thirty, they were at twenty-six and twenty-seven kids.
Let me ask you a question. Would you agree that to maintain class sizes, the desirable class sizes, it's more difficult when you have more schools to do it for each grade?
Well, it depends on how you, how you configure the schools.
Well, just, just take a, an example of.
The way they are presently now?
Three schools versus one school. Which, which, which way do you think it is easier to control it?
Again, I'm gonna answer the way I answered. It depends on the configuration. If I have, if I have three schools and in this school, all the kindergarten are and all the first grade are, it's not gonna make a difference. The way it is now, it does make a difference. So, there's, there's other solutions that you can have. Doesn't just have to be three schools versus one school or one school versus three schools. What doesn't necessarily, that doesn't necessarily make it e- easier. You can make it easier just in the, what you have by reconfiguring. And I'm not saying to do that. I'm just saying it's something that you need to look at.
So, so, right now, in Avis, based upon the numbers for twenty-two, twenty-three, they're gonna average fifteen students per class.
All the way through or just kindergarten we're talking?
No, I'm talking, I said fifth grade.
How about the fifth grade?
And Jersey Shore is gonna be like twenty-five. I mean, that, that's what happens when you try to, try to.
In our present configuration, yes, that's, that's what happens.
What I'm saying is I think we need to think about redoing our configuration.
But it doesn't have to be by building. It can, I mean, it doesn't have to be by closing down buildings. It can be by reconfiguring buildings.
I guess you would have to explain or give me an example of how that would work, cause I don't understand it.
If all the kindergarten kids are at, at Jersey Shore, it doesn't, doesn't matter whether we have one building, five buildings or ten buildings. If all the kindergarten, well, I'm just, that's an example. If all the kindergarten kids are housed at Jersey Shore, it's not gonna make, it's not gonna make a difference whether we have one, five or ten buildings. That, they'll be, they'll be an equalized class size.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying. It, the, there's two different ways you can look at it. You can look at it by closing schools or you can look at it by reconfiguration. And I'm not necessarily in favor of one over the other.
Okay.
Or whatever.
Can I ask a question?
But that happens no matter, when you look at, when you look at high school, you have classes that range from, with the same teacher. You have classes that range from fifteen to classes that range to thirty-plus. Are, are we gonna look at, what are we gonna do there?
I have a question for Dr. Olmer. When Wayne asked about the morale is different, is that a question you can answer?
As far as cheaper to Jersey Shore Elementary?
Yes.
Yeah, I had, I don't know if you were on the board yet, but I had shared with the board through the last year that I had a couple of different meetings with them. This, and they, one of the concerns was the difference in class sizes between their building and other buildings that comparing grade lines.
Not, yeah, I can see that. I, I was just curious if that was, so that is a thing.
Could we give them a choice to send kids to one of the outlying elementary schools? The letter that you sent was to get children out of Sal to go into JSE, correct?
We can. I mean, they all have a choice right now.
Yeah, but they don't realize that. A lot of people don't. I talk to people all the time. They really don't, they don't understand that. But what I'm saying is when we see a class that is so much bigger than an outlying school class, could we offer those families that that child go to one of the outlying schools to even up the, the class sizes better?
We can. That doesn't mean they're going to.
No, but, yeah.
And I guess so, I'm, the next question is right now, your school choice policy says that if the parents elect to move a child, they are providing transportation because we don't necessarily have a bus that's going in that direction. There isn't a bus that's leaving town here one break before school starts and going to Saudisburg. So, we have talked about, in order for that to occur, you would have additional transportation costs in the board. In order, I think, in order for you to get a parent to do that, you would have to agree to transport their child. But most people are either A, they're doing it because their situation allows, or if not, they're saying, well, that just takes my kid where they are supposed to be.
But isn't that actually cheaper than having to hire another teacher? Providing transportation to the ones that we asked to move to either Sal or Jersey Shore or Avis from JSE. That's what I'm, I'm trying to figure out a way of doing that without spending a lot of money.
Well, it could be, however, I mean, if you look at, so for example, fifth grade at JSE, there are a hundred and two kids and we hired a fourth teacher, so there were four twenty-five. So, you would have had to have, you would need, let's say, twenty kids to move before you didn't have to hire a fourth teacher. So, in, in theory, yes, if you could get away without hiring a teacher, potentially, it would make sense and could be cheaper. But in that case, it wouldn't work unless you got enough kids to move. And then you would end up with a situation where you've got, you already have eighteen kids and one, no, thirty-three kids in two rooms. If you added twenty kids, you'd have fifty-three kids and you'd be splitting them across two classrooms. So, you would have twenty-six and twenty-seven. So, then you would create a scenario where you shipped more kids out to Saudisburg than you had at JSE.
Okay, well, say the issue is the morale of the teachers and we need to thin a classroom out a bit rather than, I mean, not to hire a teacher, another teacher. But can't we ask the parents to send those children out to Avis or Sal in order to lighten the load of the JSE teachers and go out to one of the other buildings?
And try.
Yeah, I.
I think we would have to have a lot of conversations before the end. I think, I think we would have to have a lot of conversations before the end of this coming school year about what that's gonna look like, because I can tell you from having done it in one classroom at one grade level last year, it was not pretty.
Dr. Olmer, um, I wanna go back to the morale and the, the hiring of the five teachers as well. Um, for the record, we hired one teacher for Avis and no teachers for Saudisburg. Is that correct?
What, for this, we're not
For this, for this year?
Correct.
So the other teach, four teachers were hired for JSE to
Reach JSE, and I think the five you're referring to is the last two years, right? Because last year, we hired one at Sal and second grade.
But we did not hire any more at Sal this year, and one for fifth grade at Avis.
We added a fifth grade at Avis. That was not a hire. The next, an additional hire this year, we moved some. There was two new last year, first grade at Avis, first grade at Sal. Three new this year, kindergarten, third, and fifth grade at JSE.
Okay.
And if you notice what he said, last year we hired at Sal and Avis, and this year we hired at JSE. So we go to where the, we go to where the problem is. And sometimes what happens is, those two at Sal, last year, Sal, Sal and Avis, we knew it before school started. When school started, those numbers were not that way at JSE. Those came in after school started, and we tried, and we tried to handle it in different methods throughout the school year. And then this year, when we did the budget now, we added it this year, but it was it was easier to do it last year at Avis and Saudisburg because we knew it before school started. And then once school started, it, it ebbs and flows until the thing, until the thing balances out. We had paraprofessional help too there at JSE this year?
We moved paraprofessionals there to support, yes.
So we, it's not like we totally ignored them.
Well, another point I wanna make is, uh, regarding the AR, which is, it, that stands for administrative regulation. Is that right?
Right, yeah.
The, the ranges, which I assume you're all familiar with, for each grade level?
Really?
They're actually there under, um, I believe it's the board questions section. About, maybe, it's about six pages, seven pages back. It's like this. I put the AR numbers on the bottom right-hand side.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, for twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, Avis, uh, their, their average class sizes for grades two to five are all well below the, the minimum, the, the, the range minimum. And for Saudisburg, grades kindergarten and three to five are also well below the AR minimum. Again, pointing out the fact that we have very
What average are you talking about? Administra, you're talking about the administrative regs?
That is correct.
They're well below the
Yeah. Based upon the, the numbers that last, that are in the binder.
The high ones are too high, but that's just me.
Well, but if you take, uh, second grade at Avis, based upon the numbers, we're gonna have fifteen in a class. In second grade, the minimum range is seventeen.
Well, that's not well below. Two students isn't well below. They can come in and out in a week.
Okay, they're below. Forget the, forget the well. But the fact that almost every grade in both Saudisburg and Avis are below the, the minimums. And Jersey Shore, they're all, they're all within the range.
So our teachers shouldn't be okay if they're within the range?
I'm not, I'm not saying that.
I'm asking, okay.
Don't ask me that, because I
I think morale for this discussion is a mute point. That's a whole nother discussion, and, and it's not part of what we should be looking at or not looking at.
Well, I, don't, don't you think the existing structure is, is what's creating morale problems? Why would you say that's, that's another discussion? Class sizes
We shouldn't be deciding on whether we close schools, open schools, move schools by whether, what the morale is. We should be, we should be as, as, as board members looking at and I'm not saying don't close, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying, that should not be a criteria, what morale. Morale is part of what you make it.
Okay.
Dr. Olmer, not, I, I have a question. It's kind of about that. Well, again, courtesy of the floor, asked for us to look at the size of the classes and stay at the highest side. What would be the highest side?
So if you look back at that, she
Is that the board question?
Yeah, some of the board questions you were pointing to earlier, except this one, this one.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
On the bottom right-hand corner, I have the class size ranges for the, out of your administrative regulations. See what I'm talking about, the bottom right?
Okay.
Kindergarten, and then first and second, third through fifth, there's gonna be different groups.
Okay, so the number on the right-hand side is the highest range it can be? And we're not at those?
We were when we changed some, added some teachers, and, and then it makes it on the low side.
Some places, we're not above them. Anywhere, we're not above. We were last year in some places.
Okay.
But we are not. We're not going into day one above.
Okay. Right. Okay, I just wanted to
And some of that also depends on your philosophy of education. I look at kindergarten first and second. I mean, I, when my daughter was in school, there were over thirty-plus in those classes, and that, for today, that doesn't work. You cannot have over thirty-plus in those classes a- and it to work. But when you, I think in K-one and two, our ninety-five percent focus should be on those kids and their vocabulary and reading, and learning to read. If we can get them to read in K-one and two, and they come out of second grade on grade level and reading, they will sail from third grade to twelfth grade. They will, we will set them up for total success in life. And so, sometimes, and the law doesn't necessarily help us on that, we throw too many things into too many spaces. I think twenty-five for first and second is, is a little high, if our goal was to get, if that's our primary goal, to get those kids in reading, and that they have the, they have the one-on-one handling from their teacher that they could have to get them over that hump.
I believe
That's just my opinion. I'm not, not These are things that were made over time, and when you make these things, when you make these things over time, you always put that buffer in there to to protect the school district, and not that we shouldn't, but to me, that, that high is high.
Are we looking at other school districts that make them successful, and trying to get ideas from the other school districts?
We have done that, and so, for example, last year when we were discussing kindergarten, the numbers in kindergarten, one of the pieces of information that I provided to the board is, what kindergarten enrollment and class size, what across the entire, so that the board had an idea. I, it's, it's actually somewhere in a board update, because I provided that last year as we were discussing the kindergarten numbers. So we do that. Yes, the answer to your question is.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Do, was that last, but you did that last year? You did this, that this year for update?
Did last year during the school.
Can, can you resound that? I'd like to look at that.
Well, I, I, I did research, and actually, I know the principal at Law Sock. They have one elementary school, grades K through five, just like us, seven hundred and twenty-two students, thirty classes. Their overall combined average class size at twenty-one, twenty-two, in the elementary is twenty-four students. Uh, they had a low of twenty kindergarten, and a high of twenty-six in grades one and three. Well, we ask whether it's working. I mean
Have you seen their scores?
No, I haven't seen their scores.
Do they have aides in the classroom?
Yes, Avis
They're the best in the state.
Yes, they
They have aides?
I'm sorry?
We used to have aides in the classroom years ago.
Yeah.
Do they have aides at Law Sock?
I have no idea. We have aides now, as well.
Not like we used to, no.
Well, I can't, I can't speak, can't speak
Well, most of our aides are special education aides.
Can't speak to that.
Are special, yeah.
Yeah.
There used to be, back years ago, when my children went.
So that, last year, there were, I know, we had
A while ago.
We had multiple because of the number of kids in kindergarten. Um, so right now, what we, what we will have going into the fall is, we will have one aide assigned to kindergarten with the, anybody in kindergarten who is learning support. We have a, last year, we had a second aide that was going to kindergarten with a student. Um, we should have, I believe there will be a third one. We have a couple, but it's not like one for every teacher, if, if that's what you're asking.
Mike, were you gonna say something earlier?
I was just gonna ask Mary, when her, you know, daughter was in school or whatever, did they have aides at that point in time, in those classrooms?
I'm pretty sure they did, but you're really dating that, so My daughter's almost fifty, so That would have been like eighties, in the early eighties.
How big was your class when you were a teacher, for math?
I mean, with my class? It depend, it depend, and that's what I'm saying. When you get into middle school, when you get into high school, it depends on what the courses you're teaching, and how many kids, how many kids are taken in. I probably sometimes I, my whole room was full. Sometime, I had fifteen. So it just kind of depended on what, what the course was and what level it was.
So that's the whole, you were in high school?
Not as a teacher.
Middle school? Right, so middle school, so you had the flow of the ele, of the elementary schools going in there, so it would have been a greater number. Correct?
Right, but I'm not arguing the numbers there. I I'm not arguing the numbers on K-one and two, and even three, four, and five. I think that thirty's high, but I'm not gonna it's not something that you're gonna change. You gotta give yourself some latitude to have some wiggle room. And sometimes it happens one year, and it doesn't happen the next, and that's kind of what, what we saw last year. Something, it got big, and it's not gonna be there at that same level this year, because we made, because through Dr. Olmer and budget, we made adjustments.
Well, we had to make adjustments by hiring more teachers. It wasn't, it wasn't a move, uh, lateral movements to cover one school because of a blip. Where, that's, the, the point I'm still trying to make is, when you're trying to deal with each individual school, you, you don't, you're not moving, you're not making lateral movements. You're hiring teachers to fill that blip for that one or two years.
I understand.
Okay.
And I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying, you know, you have to look at, when you're looking at solutions, you look at all solutions and not just pinpoint to one. That's my point.
What would be your solution then, Wayne?
My solution?
Yep.
I i- if you, if you, if you looked at all of my, my handouts, I've got options for, for closing one or both. Moving fifth grade to, um, middle school is another option. And that's a model that, uh, Montorresville has used for a number of years now. Their elementary is K through four, middle school, five through eight.
Four, four grade levels will not fit in the middle school. Will not fit. You barely have room for what you have now.
Doesn't it depend on the class sizes?
What do you mean?
When you say, make a blanket statement like that, won't it depend on the class sizes?
Well, yeah, but you're giving, you're giving no room to have any, any ver, any, any variation. There has not been four, there has not been four grade levels in that middle school since it's been a high school. And when it was a high school, there were a lot more classrooms. There were classrooms in the basement. There were classrooms along the back, backside. Uh, so I, I just don't see where you could put, where you could put four grade levels in that middle school.
Well, did you
Numbers may work on paper, but numbers working in the, in the complexion and the outline and where the classrooms are, I just don't see it. But that's my opinion.
So you discount Hunt's suggestion that that is doable by adding some more space at middle, middle school. Did you read that?
Yes, I, I
You're talking about building again.
Yes.
Yeah, no, we can't do that. We can't avoid that.
Just this once. Think about the cost savings of closing a school.
But then you're borrowing money. We already have loans out that won't be paid off till twenty-thirty, eighty, eight years from now. Eight years from now, we could have that paid off.
Why did you
Stay
Why did you agree to the Hunt study?
I didn't. I voted no.
Okay.
Both times.
Didn't, didn't recall that.
I did.
My apologies. Well, I think right, right now, we've gotta decide whether whether any of the recommendations from Hunt and or the administration is, is something we're gonna
And my problem with the Hunt study, and I don't disagree with Hunt's study. I'm not saying I disagree with what's there. But when they came back with options to us, they came back with options of only questions we asked. Now, we're not the experts, but we asked a question, they came back with so in all, in all of their history of their work and what they do, there's not an option that they, beyond what we asked. Those are the only options possible to us? And that's what I had some problems with.
I don't know that we, when you say options, option
When you look at the options that they gave us, all, they were all from questions we asked them. There's not where they looked outside of the box because they, they deal with this all the time. They didn't come back with any options. Here's something you didn't think about that you might wanna think about. I'm not saying I would like that either, but I'm just saying
Well, initially, their feasibility study, the initial report, my understanding, they went around and did their own, they were, they didn't respond
I'm gonna talk about the first part of the studies, but then, when they brought it to us, if you remember, we asked questions. That the next time, when they came back to us, they answered those questions with options. I didn't see anything beyond the questions that we were asked. And maybe there are none, but that discussion, that discussion didn't happen. I consider them the experts more than I'm the expert, but also, um, when you look at, that you're gonna add on, if you add on to JSE, how many classrooms do we have to add on? I mean, you say five in this scenario, but I don't, again, I don't think fifth grade can go over to the middle school. And the, with the present configuration, it's there.
Exactly. I totally agree. And that's why they gave us another configuration, by adding space.
But Wayne, I also
What do you mean they gave us another configuration? This is the configuration you're talking about.
Yeah.
I don't feel that the Hunt study is complete. They never gave us a, a definite, infinite, you can build here, break ground now. Like, there are other things that need to be done before that could even be possible. As far as like traffic patterns, whether or not the green space is actually there. Um, like that one map that they showed had them building on top of the parking lot. Okay, so then where are we gonna move the parking lot? The, the water drainage would have to be expanded. So where would that go if, if the building stretched out to the edge of the one that was there? Like, I just, it, it was not complete.
Okay. I'm not an expert, and I'm not gonna refute, I'm not an engineer. I, I would have hoped that Dr. Olmer and Mark Wall, when they developed their list, what they considered to be recommended items, they considered not only what they think needs done, but also whether those items are doable. Am I correct or not?
Well, I would say yes to that question, but if, when you look at that list of items that the board has in their binder, those are current buildings. So there isn't, so I wanna respond to what Mrs. Calhoun said. What you have from Hunt is a study of your buildings and an answer to questions we gave them. They did not do an engineering design of a building. So for example, when you see their maps that say, well, if you wanted to add a grade to this building, it could potentially go here, it could potentially go there. The next step, if you chose to do that, would be to have someone actually design that addition or that modification, which would include the traffic study, a water study That's not part of a-
I understand.
Facility, so to answer your question, that's not part of a, a building feasibility study, which is not what Hunt was paid to do, so. There are scenarios where they said, like, here's a potential option, here's a potential option, but doesn't mean it can go there, doesn't mean, hasn't, they, they're, they're studying the building they weren't necessarily paid to design and upgrade.
I understand that. But how strongly do you feel of identifying six point five million dollars of upgrades to Salzburg and Aix?
I don't, I'm not sure I-
Well, they're here for twenty more years, twenty-five more years.
Are you talking about, um, items like?
They're all, they're all listed in the, uh, last-
But are they necessary? We're talking, when I say necessary, I mean a roof and heating.
No, you need to ask Dr. Omer and Mark, they've identified six point five million dollars from the list, larger list of the Hunt study, that they feel we need to, my understanding, they presented those to the capital projects committee, the ones that they feel that we need to move forward with.
That was these sheets, correct?
Yeah, so Mrs. Dobler, if you go under your facilities tab, the last, the very last piece of it, right before the finances tab, these are the spreadsheets that Mr. Wall and I gave to the capital projects committee that encompass HVAC, building envelope, and athletics. Those are the only items included, so I think what you're asking is there are places where Hunt said you might want to consider another classroom here, or, or expand the cafeteria here, or expand the gym here. Those are not included. This is only HVAC, building envelope, athletics.
Building envelope too.
Roof, windows, brickwork, um, hold on, I got it right here in front of me, I'll read some of them to you. Building envelope includes things like roofs, window lintels, um, the masonry work, repointing, exterior lighting, uh, brick control joints, retaining walls outside that may be failing. Um, roofs are, roof upgrades or replacement is in here a couple times. It's basically the out, things on the outside of the building that you want to make sure are in good shape, like your roof, your walls, your windows, your doors, the, the exterior of the building.
If we just wanted to continue on and kind of put a Band-Aid on it to see what happens? Because we're not sure, the construction costs are huge, you know, the trouble we've had when we, uh, with the asset funds. We ended up having to pay twice what we thought, anything out of pocket that we would ever have to pay. Uh, so, you know, is there any way we can put a Band-Aid on it to get through and then to the next couple of years? And then see where we're at? I'm talking about the roof at Sal, and I know they have a problem with their HVAC. Avis, I think, is fine, as far as I know. Doesn't have to be done immediately, can't we break it down and do what we need to do? And, you know, just let it go, right now, things are so expensive, I don't know how anybody is doing any construction. We just got into so much trouble with doing the HVAC at middle school and high school, and my gosh, we never expected to have to pay that much money out of pocket to get that stuff down.
What's the heating at the, at Sal? Is that part of?
That's part of this cost.
So that's part of that cost? Because the heating there is, that isn't the best.
According to your feasibility study, the boiler is beyond its useful life, so they have lifespans, you're beyond it.
But how, how long have we been beyond that? Like, should, were, have we been beyond it since?
Were they using other means of heat in the schools this year, last year?
I think the middle school probably died a long time ago, but it's still being used.
And that's what I mean, like, was they, did the useful life come up in twenty fifteen? And we've been still running, like, you know what I mean? It still runs, it still works, it just is not maybe as efficient?
I mean, any thoughts, Mr. Wall? How far are we beyond useful life?
Five years from Salzburg, I would say.
Could we get another five years out of it? With proper maintenance?
I would say we probably could, but I mean, I don't recommend letting things go, moving down.
So we, as the board, asked the administration and Ben and Mark to answer some questions, have you, so that we could have knowledge together? And I'm gonna read down through some of the questions. Um, so we asked, what are the current funds available for capital projects? And the capital projects funds in other areas of our budget? So as of six thirty twenty-two, the Capital Reserve had a cash balance of one million fifty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Another question was asked, what is our current debt and when will it come to term? So the, the debt service lady comes once or twice a year. Um, our current debt service is at twenty-six point five million. When will that be paid off? So it will be paid off in twenty thirty. So, no, we do not have a ton of money to spend now. Do we have to borrow money immediately? That is the, the question. What is in dire need? Mark said, you know, possibly we could get five years. So maybe in three years, we, you know, might put it on the list to bid out. Things are crazy expensive now, will they be crazy expensive then? I don't have a crystal ball, I can't tell you that. But if we don't borrow the money now, then that means we're not raising taxes now. Like, and we don't have to borrow twenty-four million dollars, there's sixty-four million dollars. We don't need to completely upgrade everything that is wrong with this in our district. We have a very good maintenance staff and I think highly of them, and they have done great jobs with what we have now in maintaining it. If that boiler system has been out for five years past its useful life, like, I'd say they're doing a pretty dang good job, and the only reason that we replaced the middle school and the high school was because we had COVID money that needed spent.
Is that really the only reason?
They were also, I mean, truthfully, they were beyond their end of their useful life as well.
So, but you know what I mean? Like, that would've been more money that we would've had to fish out. So thankfully, we had that money and could do that, or we would be in worse shape now. But I don't feel like bankrupting our, our community and our district currently is the way to go either.
But why, why would you think we're gonna bankrupt our?
Because the only way to do this would be to honestly, either A, wait until our debt service is done when we get, what, our debt service right now, what did I say it was? And so how much do we pay a year?
Two point five million.
So that, in eight years, that would be two point five million in our pocket. Whereas you borrow now, the twenty-four million or however much, that's gonna extend that for another thirty years.
So.
And we can't afford that, we could-
So why, why you, why, how does that affect our budget by borrowing twenty million?
We have to raise taxes.
Why?
Why? Because we don't have that income.
Did you look at, did you look at Jamie Doyle's scenario?
Yes, I did, and I actually asked that question, and she said, well, how will it be paid for and what would it do to taxes? So scenario one in that presentation she gave us is the district can borrow thirty point five million with no impact to tax. I do not believe that.
Well, what's happening is you're using part of that thirty million dollars and not getting used to put on to, you're paying, you're paying, because they're just extending that that stays the same, so, um-
It shows that, right, then on this little thing right here, gross millage impact, one point seven, two point eight one, one point six seven. So no, I don't believe it.
There's, there's other calculations that I don't even understand. But I, I would not necessarily question her number. She's a professional that does this for a living. And she's, because one of the questions I asked her, do us a scenario where our annual debt service would not increase? And that's what that, that scenario does.
But do not interest increase?
No, no, once, once that bond issue goes out, that debt, that debt service is set. It doesn't, the, the, the annual payments do not fluctuate once, once we have the bond issue, uh, in, in place, locked in.
Mrs. Calhoun, look, I want, I want to point out, next to where you have, next to where she has in line twelve or column twelve, the gross millage impact, look at column thirteen, where she has listed estimated capitalized interest. Because what she's showing you there is essentially the payoff of your, those five years. What, and the reason why she did that is because we asked what we could borrow that our, that our annual budget would not be impacted. So in the five years where the two pieces of debt overlap, where what we would, the increase of what we owe, they're listed there each five years, that is up at the top under capitalized interest. So in theory, that two point, taking that two point five million out, payment out over the thirty years, you get thirty-six point six million, but you have to use five point four to pay off your existing debt load. You only have thirty million left to spend. It's essentially looking like a refinancing. You went out and got new money, and you used the new money to pay off the old money, so you only can use a chunk of it going forward.
And, and, and that's kind of what I was saying, it's all taxpayer money, when you come down to it. And this takes us out to twenty fifty, twenty fifty-one, so do we know that's where we need to, need to where we need to be?
And we're not going to get the stuff to build that onto those tools based on the price that they put in there for that? Because just with that boiler, it was double the price, and things are like quadruple the price now. You probably will hardly get anything done off the list.
Mine's just right in the base on what she figured. And keeps moving. And most of us in here are going through the seventies and went through the inflation as we're doing it now, and then eventually backed itself out, so.
Well, the experts, at least what I've been reading, you know, we've been used up till this current year, we've been used to one percent or less for the last couple of years, inflation. Now it's nine point something. The projections that I'm reading is, it'll continue probably for the rest of this year at that level. But it's not gonna come back down to one percent.
No, I, I, I understand that.
I mean, three to four, three to four percent. So, as we, and, you know, there's, there's other, there's other issues as far as our finances, besides closing schools or class sizes or anything. Inflation is gonna affect us like it is everybody else when we talk about supplies, services. Um, next year, we have a teacher's contract. I mean, wages and benefits are gonna be driven to a large extent by inflation as well. So where, where are we gonna get, how, how are we gonna deal with those kind of things? I'm talking in broad terms now. There's normally two ways you can do it, it's increased revenue or reduced expenses.
But when you talk about closing schools and you have to build on to other schools, you're kind of like taking your savings from here and putting it over here.
Not if you can borrow, you can keep your debt service at the same level.
We can keep our debt service at the same level and still take care of those other buildings. If that's, you know, if you want to look at it that way too, like I say, it, it, there's more than one, there's more than one, uh, solution to the picture.
But you're also banking that enrollment is not gonna keep de- decreasing.
How can you say it's gonna, it's not gonna increase? And we see where, we see where the business is expanding.
But what has been the pattern for eight years in a row?
You can't count the COVID years, you can't, you're throwing out those years.
Don't count the COVID years.
Count them.
So you're saying it, when, as, um, some of these places increase, such as West Company and I, and they're not the golden calf, I understand that. But when they bring in another hundred and twenty-five people, none of those people are gonna come to school, none of those families are gonna come to school here? They're all, they're gonna bring all their workers in from out of Jersey Shore?
I have no idea.
Well, there's some people-
But what I'm saying to you, in the past eight years, we had, we did not have, we know that, we know that's happening now. So how do you project out, or what are you filtering into that? I don't want to take this and lock us in that we're so, um, close to being at capacity at those buildings, we have no room to, to bring anybody. Then you're gonna talk about thirty-some kids in the classroom because you have no place to put them.
Me too, I definitely do.
Well, I know there's one thing I'm not willing to do, and that's to sit, sit back and do absolutely nothing. I mean, if we're not gonna be proactive in allocating money to projects in the future, that's where this board has definitely made a major error. When we budget every year, we have never sat down and said, well, this million or this two million needs to be allocated because we know that a boiler needs to be replaced, a track needs to be resurfaced. We know these things are coming in essence, but we haven't put ourselves on a wide timeline in providing money for ourselves to do those things. That's one thing I know we need to change moving forward. Um, when it comes to what I saw, Mr. Kinley's numbers and what I've heard just even spoken tonight, I just find it really uncanny. Yes, I, I understand that, I understand that Jamie Doyle, Hunt, these people are professionals. Yes, there is room for human error, but when are we gonna start trusting what it is that we ask these people to do for us? The numbers don't lie, they are there, they may, there, there may be a little bit of adjustment. But when I looked over what Wayne Kinley presented in the aspect of trying to, and it wasn't just trying to save money, it was, it was more than that. It was consolidating for purposes of safety, it was consolidating for purposes of class sizes, which these are all issues that the board constantly talks about on a regular basis. It was, let's, and let's be real, it's going to be less maintenance because if you consolidated to one building, if that's what the board wanted to do in that direction, you've got one building versus three buildings to maintain when it comes to elementary schools. So it's more than just saving money, there's a lot more wrapped up here than just, than just that. But when I looked at Jamie Doyle's numbers and the way Mr. Kinley had things presented on that paper in the back of the binder, in essence, if it all worked out, we're not going to raise taxes, because I'm certainly not in favor of that. We could borrow that money to do exactly what needed to be done, which was to build on to JSE, which was roughly what we asked Hunt to come up- which was roughly what we asked Hunt to come up with. We asked them for a price range, something, a ballpark figure, which they gave us.
Which is not, is not credible anymore.
Well, that's because we're sitting back and doing nothing. That's because when we asked for that presentation to be given to us, it's been almost a whole year since we sat down to even discuss it.
Longer.
And it's not their fault because they didn't create the inflation. That, that had nothing to do with.
But I see us not doing anything and I'm not okay with that.
Point of, of where the thing crosses that it's better to have done that and not have done. Is there a point?
Well, I guess in my mind, I can't honestly answer that. It would be an opinion only. But it seems like from day to day, as you get up and you look at newspapers and read, read different things that are happening on, you know, safety's become, I think, one of the greatest needs. I think. And if we're not being proactive in trying to figure that out for our community, we're gonna deeply regret that. So I think just in that aspect, we already had said about um looking into doing more than what we have done. And we could, we could accomplish a lot more if we had all students for elementary schools in one building at one place. It would solve class size issues. It would solve maintenance problems and money. It would solve a lot of issues. Yes, you have to add on. But here's one of those stipulations, I guess, that I'm sitting back and going. If your own heater in your own house broke and you have no money to fix it, what would you do? You would probably have to go out and borrow and get a loan. So I don't understand the concept of people not wanting to borrow the money. It's not about, I don't see that being a major problem. What I see being a problem is when we're borrowing above what it is that we actually can't live within our means. We can still borrow money and live within our means from what I saw according to the budget, according to Jamie Doyle, and honestly, um what Wayne Kinley presented on the paper and Hunt. I don't want to exclude Hunts. I mean, they had a lot of um useful information. But I, I also can't disagree with you, Mrs. Thomas, on what you had said about, yes, they only answered what we asked and we aren't professionals. I don't know if there's other options out there that we could pursue.
Now, and we have to look at all, you have to ask the question or a combination of questions and look at all solutions that go with the question. Because right now, the saving money, we're talking about closing schools. But does that really save money with what we have to spend out to make the addition? And if the, if the, the question, the, the big question and only question, which it isn't, is class size, there's more than one way to, to slate that and to answer that. It doesn't have to be with closing schools. And we're not looking at the whole picture. If we look at the whole pictures, then the thing is that we go the one direction, fine. But I don't want to go back, I don't want to go three months from now and say, well, why didn't we do, why didn't we look at this? We only looked at this one piece to the puzzle when there's more than one solution.
But when we look at it, we can't look at it in a five-year plan because you won't save a dime. If we, if we close schools, that's not what you're going to see on paper and it's certainly not going to go that direction. When you go ten to twenty years, that's when you're gonna see your return. And in those ten to twenty years, from what I saw, you're not gonna have major means.
Well, that's why I asked, what is the break even point?
Right. I don't think it's going to be five years. Um, I think honestly, that's, that's a pipe dream. Um, but I'd say from ten to twenty, you'd get a return. And if we got more proactive about changing some policies here in trying to generate revenue and making our policies work for us and not against us.
That is currently in the works, just so you know, Michelle.
So, I mean, that's been that way. I know at least since I've been on the board. So, and this is going on five years. I've advocated for that. But nothing has been done, so I.
And, and to be honest with that, the board changed since you've been on the board. And so the, the previous board, that was not an issue that was ever gonna be solved. So maybe with this board, it will be. And, and you, you have a committee now that's working on that. And does the strategic plan play any role into what we do here? Because we're ready to do, we're about ready to give a new strategic plan. Isn't it up this year? Is it the last year for it? So do we look at, does that play, does that play any role into what we do or don't, or don't do? I don't know. I'm just trying to question that.
There is one other thing too that um I know I've been, I know I've advocated for this about, you know, wages and benefits and trying to keep costs down. But one thing that I had a conversation with somebody yesterday that blew my mind and it never even dawned on me. This person advocates for a lot of teachers at, at, at public schools and not aides, but more teachers in the classroom. So this is just a scenario. If you close the schools and, and did not downsize the amount of teachers that we, of course, would think we would need to downsize, but keep more of the teachers. They're already budgeted. And then not have the aides. If we're really about education like we say we are, maybe that would prove to be beneficial. I don't know. It just, like I said, it just dawned on me last night when I was talking to someone. Yes, I, I, I agree, we need to save money, but it's just the thought that came to me after I talked, talked to him. So I've never even considered having two or three teachers in a classroom where it might be necessary. I don't know. Instead of hiring aides to help out, where of course we know they can't give any instruction.
I know, I'm just about ready. All right, we're gonna call this part of the work session over for this point in time. Uh, there isn't, there is another one scheduled for August twenty nineteen, April. And we will move on to um second courtesy of the floor. State your name and address and identify what you would like to address and you will have three minutes.
Bob Pryor, Mifflin Township. I see a lot of uh the people got up and spoke tonight, including myself. I'm so sorry that we throw a negative pattern out here because we got up and spoke. I don't appreciate that, Ms. Avis. But anyway, let me remind everybody, we lost a congressional seat right down through Lake Coming County and Snyder. The other two congressional districts come in, closed down, Lake Coming County. I believe it was commissioners told me we lost over ten thousand people from Lake Coming County. They are leaving. Another thing, our students, for the most part, are not coming back to this district. They're going somewhere else, folks. Now, some of them are, but not, there's a big percentage that are not. But let me tell you this. Why does Jersey Shore have twenty-seven credits required to graduate when the other districts don't have near that? You're talking twenty-one, maybe? Why do we have twenty-seven? You know, if we cut the unnecessary programs and got back to the basics. Now, I, I concur with the technical training and stuff. That's good. I had that myself when I was in school. And I was successful because of that. But programs require educators and rooms. So we get back to basics. We can open up those rooms and you can look at a whole different scenario as far as moving things around. When I went to school, my first grade class was thirty-four kids. We had a blackboard. We had hardback books. We didn't have no teacher's aide. And that one teacher got us through and we did well in life. Now we have whiteboards and laptops and tablets and everything. We're getting to the kids. And unfortunately, a lot of kids are failing. I feel when I went to school, I got a damn good education and it paid off. I worked myself up to a responsible position where I was in charge of high forty million dollar projects. And a lot of people did that in here. So why can't we work with what we got, close a couple of schools? If you get rid of some of these really unnecessary programs, that will open up rooms in Jersey Shore Elementary. Years ago, and I believe Mrs. Thomas, you were still working for this district at that time, when we presented our plan, we asked the administrators if they could make it work and every one of them said they can make it work. I hope you remember that.
I do remember that and I say that. I was one, I was one part of the presentation. But I made.
You said it would work.
I made the presentation for the high school and that's where my mindset was. As a board member, I cannot focus in on just the high school. I must focus in on K to twelve.
If you could make it work then, you certainly can make it work now.
I said, I only looked at my piece to the puzzle.
Connie Packer from Mifflin Township. I understand we have a police officer. I know this was not brought up, but since I've been with the, you know, was here with the board, I wanted to mention it. There's a police officer for security. Is that in senior high?
He covers all buildings in the town.
What would happen if something happened in Sally'sburg? That's a long ways out. I'm, I'm didn't.
Covered by state police jurisdiction.
But if something happened, where would that state trooper be? You know, I mean, a lot of times people just think these things happen in high school. I'm sorry, they don't. And I'm, you know, I'm thinking of our children and, and the teachers, everybody. You know, you, you hear of it every year. But I, I mean, that was a product, but that has just been on my mind.
Just as a simple answer to that, that is something the board is looking at and our new assistant superintendent is working on for the beginning of the school year to give us a safety report that the state police did for our buildings. And so we are looking, we are looking into that further. It just doesn't happen overnight.
Okay. And I realize that would be another expense, but I think that would be, you know, a good expense. Thank you. Maybe you can answer this is um, I've never been in the Avis Elementary School. Is it all open forum? So what would happen if an active, active shooter, heaven forbid, would come into that building? You know, they can't shut doors there, you know, and that's something to think about.
So I would answer that with, without revealing too much security information. We have made security upgrades to that building and we have more security upgrades planned with our additional round of grant funding with that. So I hear your concern and I can't divulge too much, but there are security upgrades coming.
That's good, you know, because they're helpless. And I do appreciate all your opinions tonight and um I listen to you all and all I can ask is, you know, it's really tough decisions what to make, you know, with the money you have to spend and the best decisions. And um I respect every one of you and I know it's a tough choice, tough road. Thank you.
For Francis, fourteen twenty-five Oak Street. The Capital Projects Committee come up and brought this all on the table and it was brought up and mentioned about what our Capital Projects Committee has done over the years. This is a document they prepared and I'm gonna give it to the lady that requested to see what the Capital Projects has. That projects out to when they first began the capital project, for by law and by policy, we have to have a capital project committee that maintains and upkeeps our buildings. And up to this point in time, we've done one eighth of a good job doing that. And it's been mentioned about our maintenance people and others that have pitched in and done some of these projects, which we be proud of what they have done for us and how they maintain our buildings. So I think we need to review that, that project, capital project, because I have another couple of years anyway to do and, and keep up with things. We don't have to do twenty million dollars at a time. They've, it's like we do at our homes. We schedule out, so just review that. Also, when we talk about populations and class sizes and so on, class sizes have gone up and down a very, but it's not affected at the elementary level. Class sizes and our population start to drop down and get to eighth grade through senior high. That's when students start to drop out and decide they don't like school anymore and so on and so forth. So we have to maintain the buildings we have now to teach our elementary students. And we don't, let's factor in, we don't know how long. I'd like Mr. Andrews to tell us we have alternative sources of education for our children. We have children to go to charter schools. They go to homeschool. Well, we got board member to homeschool what, four children? Did you homeschool four children? Yeah. So there you have it. So how many children now are being homeschooled? How many that don't attend our building? How many students are going to charter schools? Let's focus on education. Let's focus on bringing all the children back to our schools that now go someplace else to get an education. Let's look into that. That's a couple hundred kids at least or more, isn't it? How many? And how many dollars go away from our budget for these children going to other schools? What do we send to other school districts, other places? Couple million dollars a year. Don't be Mr. Andrews. Couple million dollars a year. Yeah. Let's bring those kids back to our schools. Let's work on it. I'll volunteer. I'll volunteer, head up a committee, do research, do study. Why are they leaving our schools? Years, years. My pastor and I, we volunteered at the senior high school. Oh, you know, I got a govern for you, Mary. For years, my pastor and I volunteered at the senior high school. And for the classroom friends, and we worked with at-risk students that left our schools, went out to get other, but they decided they missed the boat and they come, wanted to come back and get an education. We worked with these children for years. And so and so forth with Bob Conrad, who was assistant superintendent, and he came to us, the pastor and I, when David Hager that put the main department education, liked what you guys are doing. We go and make a speech and presentation in Department of Education. So we did. We went there and we made a speech down Harrisburg and they liked what we were doing. We, we helped the state develop programs. We're the only school district in the state were doing that. Next year, you folks cut that program out. So we had to quit doing that, taking care of at-risk kids coming back to school. Boy, that was great. You guys know, the average person had no idea why kids drop out of school and, and what problems they had. But what I'm saying is we got a budget and the average person, we, they have to understand, people, and I appreciate all these people. I've been doing this for sixty years. We closed a school. The super, I mean, the school's board at that time, yeah, we're saving money, we're saving money. We're saying, Mr. Andrews, can you tell us how much money we saved by closing? No, no, you can't. I know you can't. I'm not asking you to. Mr. Kinley, he shouldn't have been in the county. Yeah. Yeah, we spent, we spent an extra eight million dollars on the elementary school, went in debt an extra eight million dollars to close a school. We're still paying off that debt. So you don't save money when you gotta borrow money to do a subject. And Mr. Kinley knows that as well. So anything we do, anything you have on this list. Anything we have on that list, we're gonna have to borrow a big bucks to do. So I say, keep the two schools open, take care of what we need of right away, pay our debt off and then talk about something else. Thank you.
Anyone else? And remember, as I said at the beginning, this was just fact finding. We're putting things out on the table. Doesn't mean that because we put something out on the table, that's the way we have to go or not the way we have to go. Our goal is to then make sure we're looking at all the options that answered the question. Uh, board, any further discussion for tonight? Hearing none? Can I have a motion for adjournment? Don't move. This is meeting as adjourned.